... with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll grant Westcat permission to record the meeting. Is anyone else recording the meeting? Okay, we'll move on to the chairman's update. Three items. We hope everybody will join us on Monday, May 29th for our annual Memorial Day Parade. It will start promptly at 10:00 a.m. at Town Hall and end at the New Westwood Cemetery. Please join us, the American Legion Post 320, Westwood Veterans and Area Residents for a Day of Remembrance for those who gave their lives in service to their country. It is a great event.
So that's a new venue.
Yeah.
We're going to the new cemetery, not the old cemetery.
Correct.
Will there be signs up directing people?
No, no problem. Stepping back a little bit, the weekend before, on Sunday, May 21st, at 11:00 a.m. at the Islington Community Center, we will have an Eagle Scout Ceremony. Vincent Andrea Tola, Nicholas Fusco, Sean Metzger, Daniel O'Connor, and Liam O'Connor have completed the requirements for the rank of Eagle Scout. All five young men will be recognized for citizenship within our community and scouting skills within the troop. These young men collectively have earned over 140 merit badges and have served various leadership roles. They've completed a major community service project totaling hundreds of hours of community service. They are all juniors or seniors at Westwood High School and participate in a wide variety of extracurricular activities. They hold part-time jobs ranging from grocery clerk to U.S. Soccer Referee to movie theater concierge. We're very fortunate in Westwood. We just had another Eagle Scout Ceremony with five Eagle Scouts. This is great to see. And lastly, for the chairman's update, I would encourage everybody to join us tomorrow night at 7:00 o'clock at the Thurston Middle School as we have a presentation from our Economic and Development Director and then from the developer seeking to do some development with the town and Islington Center. This will be the first of a two-part meeting. We expect that tomorrow will be mainly a presentation. The board will ask for some technical information and some technical questions, and the meeting will then continue. So please join us if you can. Any questions, thoughts, comments? No? Okay. So we have three public hearings. The first is a Downey Street Pole location. Christine Cosby, is Christine joining us?
No, she's not.
No? No? Okay.
This is, you've already done, it's a follow-up. Yeah, it's to do, officially sign the paperwork.
Okay.
So we already had a vote.
Sorry, I had a vote and the pole has already been installed.
It's so much, I was gonna say, so much for getting it done during April vacation and without signing the paperwork post-pole.
Right. You'll remember, the whole point was to get it done during April vacation. We couldn't post the meeting in time to do that, so you voted to do the paperwork subsequently. That's what we're doing today.
So we're gonna sign after the meeting?
Yeah.
So we're gonna just take a vote? Okay. Okay. That was the best public hearing we've had today.
I think we're gonna go to certified letters. It seems so official.
Yeah, we didn't know if there was an additional thing.
Do you object to moving the pole so we can have power to the solar panels?
Yeah.
I was worried it was more than a pole. I don't know why we got certified letters.
Yeah, we didn't know if it was something more extended.
It was more than a pole. What it was, was the underground cabling had to be replaced as well, but that wasn't part of the petition. It did. It was ancillary work that had to be done. The pole locations with the hearings about.
Oh, okay. Okay, so.
The pole that's already up.
It's up.
So we did take a vote, and you would've received notice before that vote. And this was a secondary.
No, they didn't.
Oh, they didn't?
They did. This is all the process. But I don't thi, I don't think you guys have a, do you have a problem with the pole?
No, I was, no. I was worried it was gonna be like 80 feet tall.
It is. No, we would've never done this except that it was a school issue.
Why'd it get done during April vacation?
We get to get done during April vacation so not, so as not to risk children's safety.
Okay.
But did you know a pole was needed for the solar panels?
No, they didn't.
They didn't know a pole was needed?
Yeah, so what happened was when they were, when they were hooking up the electric for the, for the solar panels, they found that the capacity in the lines wasn't sufficient to handle the incoming. And then what they found further is that the lines had been laid underground without conduit. So they were exposed to the elements, and then they needed a new pole. That's what caused a new pole to be needed, to run the cables above ground rather than underground.
Okay.
Oh, no.
So it's electricians.
Yes.
My husband's an electrician. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay.
You're welcome. Fascinating. I have a PTO meeting tomorrow.
Let's hope they all go this way. Okay, we have a public hearing for a taxi company application. Are you Mr. Awada?
Yes.
Join us.
No, we do it here. Next, next year we're sending it.
Janice, Janice will get this next year.
Oh, okay, lucky you.
Yeah. So in front of the board is a license for a taxi company. This is a little unusual as well because Mr. Awada has art, has been licensed with Westwood since 2015. Back in December, the board, when they were doing their renewals, Mr. Awada just didn't finish or finalize all of his paperwork. He did have his preliminary inspection by the police department. He passed his inspections, but all of the final paperwork had not been submitted. And we require that for all our purposes. Subsequently, we spoke, and he had changed his email address, so we didn't get in touch on appropriate levels. So he's been informed that he needs to keep up his contact information with our office so we can make sure that we can get in touch with them. So he's requesting that the board consider granting him a new license, not a renewal license.
Okay.
And he has filled out all the.
Because it lapsed.
It lapsed. That's right.
It ended December 31st of 2016. But he did fill out and, and put all of his paperwork in. He's had sign-off from the police department, and they reviewed everything in their files as well.
How long was your license in Westwood before December?
Since 2015.
2015, I think, yeah.
Okay.
Sure. So Mr. Awada, we, I know Christine works very hard.
Right.
You can't let this happen again.
I won't. I don't mean to lose my license, but it won't happen anymore.
I mean, you gotta keep in touch with this office because Sergeant Secad only stopped you and told you it had to be renewed.
Exactly.
And I know Christine works hard to try to reach you. She came in front of us and told us several times she tried to reach you.
She is, she is.
So we don't like to put anyone out of work, but you know, you need to cooperate with us so it doesn't happen again.
Right.
Okay?
Thank you.
That's all I have. I, I agree with that, and I would add that the burden should be on you to contact us and not on us to find you.
Thank you.
Every year you get a renew on January 1st.
It's not gonna happen. I don't mean to lose my license, but.
November?
Yeah, so I, we typically will send out the renewal packets September so that you have a good leeway, some even, even sometimes in August.
Right.
We'll send out all the information that has to be filled out and returned to us by, we usually do a date, an early date in November so that we can review the information, follow-up if there's anything missing, and then bring it to the selectmen in two, over a course of two meetings, November into December.
Right.
Before the December 31st time lapses again.
Right.
We'll let it go this time, in my opinion, but next time around, there are other people who would like the license.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
I move that we approve a new license for Mohamed Awada doing business as Awada's Taxi Company for the 2017 calendar year.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? None? Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
I'll call you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Good night.
We have our third public hearing for a one-day special license. The applicants are Allison and Daniel Marsh. Are you Allison Marsh?
Yes, I am.
How did Daniel get the night off?
He is bowling, and it's his last night, so he got lucky.
I thought you were gonna say Celtics.
Oh, he'll be watching that afterwards.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mrs. Hayden, Mr. Walsh, and the rest of the staff. Tonight, I'm here before you to introduce Allison Marsh, and she is here, she's gonna be having a family celebration at Hale on June 24th, and she has requested a license to sell beer and wine. Excuse me, not to sell, excuse me. She has requested a license to serve beer and wine. She has hired a tip-certified server, and the proper insurance has been proven through the certificate of liability for the caterer doing the serving of the beer and wine. And in addition to that, she has received a temporary food permit from the Health Department. The caterer, her caterer, has South Shore Taco Guy, and, let's see.
How many people are there?
About 200.
Sergeant Secad has reviewed the application and did confirm that a police detail is not needed for this event. Allison will be having her tent vendor visit the Building Department for a building permit in, in the couple of weeks to come.
And they have to inspect it once it's up and installed, right? The tent? Somebody comes back, I think, and inspects it after installation?
Okay.
I think they, they're there at the time, right at the time.
Whatever.
Yeah.
Make sure it's secure and.
And we're just confirming with Deputy Chief Reedon about possible permits for propane for the grills that the taco, excuse me, the caterer might be using, but I'm gonna confirm that.
Is that allowed by Hale? You should check on that.
I.
I didn't see in the paperwork if, just to make sure that Hale is okay with that, that they don't have any restrictions on it.
I will make sure. Okay. Let's see. Allison will be having the, at the event at the North Beach, and there'll be plenty of parking at Cat Rock Parking Area, and she has submitted all the required documentations for this event, and the Alcohol Review Committee did take a vote. The majority who voted did approve to bring this before the selectmen for its consideration.
There was dissent?
No, there weren't. There, there were two, three did not reply. I think it was probably because we had talked about it in person, but the, you know, the police chief, fire chief, health director, community and economic development director, all voted in favor to ask you to consider this license.
And you're okay?
I'm okay with it, too.
Okay.
So did you have a destination wedding, and this is the after-party?
So I had a small wedding. We have a big family, so I had a small wedding in Killington, Vermont. So it's kind of a destination. And now we're doing barbecue to celebrate with all our family and friends.
My only question is, how will you be sure that the people who are there under the tent or whatever, who have served, are only guests to your party? I, I saw some kind of ticket thing. I mean, I just wanna make sure it doesn't become a, an event that unexpected people come into.
Oh, yeah, no, the ticket was more of just like to be cute. But from what I know about Hale Reservation, it, there's not supposed to be anyone like coming near our party. There might be hikers around, things like that, but it's our own little area. There's not supposed to be really people coming into that area.
Okay. I'm not, it's not where the new building is, so it's, it's an open area?
So it.
If the tent gets installed?
I'm not real, it's, it's open, so you walk to like a trail, and then it's open.
Yeah.
But you wouldn't really walk that way unless you were going.
Got it.
There on purpose.
I just would encourage you to have some people that you know to be just on the lookout. You don't want anything.
Yeah, oh, definitely.
That you didn't plan for to happen. That would be my, just my advice.
Thank you.
So, Janice, I have a question for you. I know Sergeant Secad said no, but do we have like a policy in town as far as when a detail is needed?
I assume that the police department has a policy. I'm not aware of it. I haven't seen it. I ask every time we have a one-day event.
So don't I, that's why, that's why I bring it up again.
You know, when we, when Severian had their big event, I think when there's traffic flow in streets.
It's only traffic?
They don't feel comfortable or necessary for the police to be in the event itself. It's about the traffic outside. In this case.
Public passing.
Yeah, the public passing in the area.
The last time that I recall, we had a police detail was when the St. Mark's Church had their event, and the police were there really to cross people and.
Yeah, and I'm thinking back to Severian fundraiser.
Well, the reason I bring it up is, you know, usually I think when people are going to drink, and they see a police officer, they drink just a little less, which isn't such a bad deterrent, you know?
Put the burden on the server.
That's right, it is. There's no doubt about it. And the consumer.
Yes. And the server's name being the same as your last name is a coincidence, or is it somebody you know?
It is a relative, but he will not be drinking at the event. He will be serving.
Or he will risk his tip certification. Okay, so I will move that a license be granted to cover from 12:00 noon until 9:00 p.m. on Saturday, June 24th, in order to allow for setup and cleanup to Allison and Daniel Marsh for their one-day event. And this is a beer and wine license.
Are you gonna do the contingencies, too?
Right. This license should, and the motion is, approval is contingent upon the receipt of final inspections from Fire, Health, and Building Departments.
And I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Done? Enjoy.
Great, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You don't need a tent, the weather's gonna be perfect.
I hope so.
Lovely venue.
Famous last words.
Great venue. Moving right along.
Todd or?
Yeah.
Joan?
I think Joan's in. We can go to.
You wanna talk about the bill 18-6?
You can do the bill, yeah.
Oh, there she comes. Just in time.
Hi, Joan.
Hello.
Right on down.
They say timing is everything, Joan.
Yeah, I was gonna say, hello. Shall I sit here? Yes.
See if he can find a seat.
Yeah. I don't have my package because I didn't.
Yeah, so it looks like it's a request to post and fill a senior foreman and heavy equipment operator. Why don't you just give us a little background?
So we have an employee, Tom Costello, who has been with the department since 1999, and has been the senior foreman since 1999. He is retiring. So we would like permission to post his, the field and grounds senior foreman position, which we expect frankly to be able to offer to an internal candidate, which will then vacate.
A heavy equipment operator.
The library. We've been, you know, we've been through this before, both in the DPW and the library. So that's, that's the reason for the request to post and fill. He's, I think he's retiring pretty soon, in, in June, yeah.
For a lot of fieldwork that's required.
That's right.
So are you, it looks like, are you asking tonight to fill the heavy equipment operator and then the backfill?
So we're asking to fill the, the field and grounds senior foreman position that, that Tom will be vacating. And in the anticipation of, of being able to fill that for the internal candidate, I think that Todd's doing a great job of providing growth for his people, that will, that will create a heavy equipment operator position that will become vacant if somebody gets promoted into the senior foreman role. And it's of course the busy, a busy time, not that there's any one time that's a lot busier than others in the DPW, but, so it's two for the price.
No, I don't have any questions.
No. I'll move that we authorize the Director of Public Works, the Human Resource Director, and our Town Administrator to post and fill the senior foreman position, and assuming that it will be an internal promotion to fill that position, then we also authorize the Director of Public Works, Human Resource Director, and Town Administrator to post and fill a heavy equipment operator position within the Department of Public Works.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Done? Thanks, Joan.
Thank you. That was easy. Another one is easy.
That was easy. Wow.
I lucked out.
Angie didn't even get cold.
Well, I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna hang around for a bit, so I'll.
All right, we're back to appointment and reappointment process. What's going on here, Christine?
Oh, do we wanna do the?
Willie Pond. Oh, I'm sorry. Where's that? Mike, do you wanna tell us something about this?
Yeah, so we received an email today from a resident in, in the area who.
Why don't we tell what people what we're talking about?
Yeah. The area is, the Willet Pond Dam on Brook Street, and the resident lives at 10 Brook Street in Westwood. And they sent us an email basically asking, asking for the Board of Selectmen to indicate its support for a hearing that's going to be held on a bill that was, that's refiled. So this, I just talked to Paul McMurtry just before the meeting started. This, this bill has been before the legislature before, didn't get enacted the last time. It's been refiled, and it's getting its hearing on Wednesday. The flurry of emails indicate that this is an important issue for the residents in that area, and so the, the representatives are aware of it. Paul's gonna look into it further tomorrow, and he's gonna do his best to move it along. I believe this, this location is actually in Norwood. It's along Brook Street in Norwood.
But it impacts.
It impacts.
Walpole, Norwood, and Westwood.
Westwood, yeah, because we all come together there, and that's one bridge that goes, goes across. So it's an important connection point. This, this actually, this bridge, as I remember, was worked on some five or six years ago.
Not even that long.
Yeah. Well, we, we did a cover on.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
So we did a cover, but just prior to that, Norwood did a cover on, on its side of it. So there's been a lot of work in this area to shore things up. The long and short of it is the Napontet River Watershed Association is the current owner of the dam. They don't have sufficient funds to maintain the dam in a condition it ought to be maintained. And so the proposed legislation would, would have the bridge, care, custody, and control of the bridge would be given to the state through an eminent domain process, and that's what the bill's all about.
Do we know, does Napontet River Watershed view this as friendly?
Yeah, I don't think that they're opposing.
No, I think they want this.
I think they want this, yeah.
Because there's habitat, there's coastal recreation, everything else that if this doesn't get funded.
Based on the fact that it's being named, I think it went through a lot of steps.
And why, why didn't it?
Yeah.
Why did it need to be refiled? Was, was it just leftover?
That's what Paul's gonna look into tomorrow.
As opposed to opposed?
Yeah.
Okay, we don't know. I think it makes a lot of sense that, sounds like the, the best answer to a challenging situation if we leave it unaddressed.
Yeah.
So if you want, I, you can authorize me to prepare a letter of recommendation, a letter of support that I'll circulate.
And when you talk to Paul again, I'd, I'd ask him what in, what would be in that letter that would be helpful?
Yeah.
As opposed to just a letter saying we support House Bill whatever?
Mm-hmm.
You know, if he has any particular details that he thinks we should be addressing to help the effort. But I, I move that we have the Town Administrator file a letter on our behalf in support of this bill.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Done? Okay, Mike.
I'll circulate the way.
Yeah, just circulate.
And what I'm gonna do is get a copy of the bill on the attach, so you can get a look at that.
The bill's, the bill is here.
Oh, the bill is here?
It is here.
You got it?
I got the bill.
You got the bill?
Yes.
I wasn't in today.
They're going, they're going to name the bridge, the Gregory W. Sullivan Dam.
Greg, oh. Okay, good.
Okay, on to appointments and reappointments. So all the individuals on the attached list responded they are interested in being reappointed to their respective positions. The board's committees listed are only those with 100% membership response. So where do we start with those?
What do you want us to do, Christine?
So.
Which list? Right up to that, hold on.
So, so let's start with page 31, which is a two-page, 31, 32.
It's not in the Alcohol Review Committee.
Alcohol Review Committee. So all of these are basically, these are, these are pretty standard. Everyone's coming back. The only new appointments in this list is James Gavin, who's the recent recipient of the John Cronin Public Service Award. As tradition, that member becomes the new member, and the last member drops off. And then new appointments, just for Western Emergency Management Agency, Emily Parks will replace Johnny Antinucci as the school superintendent on that, and John Hickey is the current chair. All three members of this have been sitting on the local emergency planning committee, which will have that list probably at the next meeting. But all, all three members sit on that. Usually the chair on the smaller group about upcoming emergencies and stuff like that, so.
And the chair of our board should also be on the John Cronin, be an appointee to the John Cronin.
Oh, yes, sorry. I think I have that right up.
And let me ask you on, and I'm happy if I'll do it, the Stormwater Management Committee, Chief Schoval will stay on?
Why does Will until?
He will until, yeah.
At the time, okay.
Those are better places.
I hope he'll stay on after that, but.
And then just going back as well, Emily Parks will also go on to the OPEB Liability Committee, yeah, Task Force. I don't have it listed here, I'm waiting for a couple.
Who do you have?
I do.
Yep, page 33, with Joan, Mike Gillette in hand.
I'm sorry, yes, I do.
And so I'm assuming she's just replacing.
She's just replacing John Antinucci's appointment so far. There's a couple other, but we're gonna clean up those committees before I bring them to the board for consideration. And then reported vacancies that I have at the moment, Leo Crow.
Wait, wait.
Go back to, back, page 29.
So my reported vacancies to date, Leo Crow's indicated he wishes to step down from Cemetery Commission, so that will leave one vacancy on the three-member board, so if anyone could put that out for.
Can I just ask, well, did he have kind of an expertise in cemetery work, or?
No.
No, no. Just a longstanding resident.
A resident, yeah.
Okay. So something with a business sense, almost?
He used to be Assistant Superintendent of Schools.
Okay.
Yeah, Tommy Aaron is the.
Tom Aaron's on there, yeah.
Okay.
He's chairman, I think.
Islington Center Task, Helen Gordon has stepped down. So, she was the chair?
She was, yes. So, she, she's gonna, she's remaining on until her term ends.
Which is the end of June.
Which is the end of June, June 30th. So, she'll make it through the next couple of meetings with the Centaur Task Force in, in front of the Board of Selectmen. But as of July 1st, she'd like to come off that because she's actually expressed interest in another board in town, so I think she's.
Do you know who appointed her chair last time? Was it the committee or?
I think the committee itself.
The committee itself.
My recommendation on the Islington Task Force is that we wait to decide what we wanna do until the end of our meetings in June. I just feel like I'd like to know more and.
Yeah, we don't have, all the task force meetings the next months.
Yeah, do you have any schedules?
No, they're all, they're all part of our selectmen meetings.
They're all jointly with us and they're.
Oh, okay.
Before the end of June.
Okay.
So, I think it'd be nice to just get a sense of where we are when we go through that before we.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, as long as they're all scheduled meeting.
And Christine, did Helen give us another board she wanted to be on, or she's just gonna go to another board?
Conservation Commission.
Conservation, okay.
Which would be perfect.
She's perfect, yeah, very well.
Yeah.
That would be great.
So, I'm just trying to overlook that meeting with Michael.
Okay.
And then, Council on Aging, Mary Gens. Mary Gens has been on the Council on Aging for quite a while, since 2008. She's been a great addition to the board. She expressed that she felt it was her time to step away and let some, someone else come on.
Actually, I think she's caught off her term.
She is. Yeah, she is at a term limit. But she was interested if the board wanted to put her on anything else, she wasn't happy, so she was.
And you have somebody who's interested in that?
I actually have two people that are interested in that now.
Is Mary interested in the Cemetery Commission?
Possibly, actually, one of them might be a good fit.
The OPEB liability task force, Mike, is that still necessary?
Oh, yeah, I think that OPEB, they don't meet very often. They only meet around the time that it's being updated every two years and this is a year that the report's being updated. So, yeah, it's, it's important, it's a good check-in.
How many members are on the committee?
There's only half dozen members.
Most of it is staff and then board representation, including Board of Selectmen, assessors, the town treasurer.
And Phil.
And Phil Shapiro.
And Phil Shapiro.
Shapiro acts as the chairman.
Yeah, so Michael Cronin is moving out of Westwood, so he has, he cannot be reappointed. Maureen Blade felt like the task force was doing well and that wasn't necessary for input anymore. However, she was willing to stay on at the board.
Well, can we restructure the board and remove those two seats?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's our board.
I mean, I just don't wanna.
It's a task force.
Yeah, I don't wanna go out and recruit people.
No.
You know what I mean?
No, it, it's not so formal, John.
Yeah, I mean, if, if Maureen just stays on this year while they reassess just a one more year, then that gives us two years to fill the slot before they reassess her.
Yeah.
So.
They don't do much in the odd year.
Right, right.
So, we can, you can hold on that.
I would just hold on that, yeah.
Yeah, on that. And then finally, the Royal London Award Committee, Megan Lica Melly was, has been on the board for the last five years and she felt saying that she, that she wanted someone else to take her place and she's ready to step away. So, she's been, she's been great.
I have a couple more people to, we can do that.
So, I guess Christine, I'm wondering just for our next meeting, if we could just, under proposed action, just list out, because I think we need to list out the committees that have 100%.
So, that is, um.
Thirty.
So, that's basically, that's pretty much these next couple pages.
Thirty-one and thirty-two.
The 33 is staff appointments.
Okay.
For their various roles on various boards and committees. So, pages 31 and 32 are full board membership reappointments. So, that's, that's where I am. Boards that are missing from here because I haven't heard back from one to maybe a couple people on that board. And I like to give the board full membership.
Yeah, no, no, I get it.
The staff member appointments, which is page 33, these are all of our various ex-officio member, memberships. So, those can be done, we can get those off. And then when I give the board the full membership, I'll still have these people listed, but we'll only get clear that you don't have to read those.
So, shall I start with page 31 and 32?
Yes.
Yeah.
I would just want to note that our records reflect adding the chairman to the John Cronin Public Service Award Committee. Otherwise, since this will be part of public record, I don't have to read all of them, correct?
Yeah, I toast this with the decision notice.
Right, so I'm just going to move that we approve the appointments, the renewal of appointments and the addition of Mr. Hickey for the noted committees that we have on pages 31 and 32 of our packets for this meeting on May 15th, 2017.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
And then, just backing up one more thing on page 29. So, the Board of Selectmen has representation on various boards and committees in town. But if you wanted to have a discussion, there's a board member that we appoint to the Age of the Elderly, the Islington Center Task Force, the Long Range Financial Planning Committee, the Royal London Award Committee, and the Western Environmental Action Committee. And then, as I stated before, all three members are appointed to the local emergency planning committee. And then the chairman, the current chair typically sits as the Norfolk County Selectmen's Association representative on the Westwood Emergency Management, which she just appointed, the Housing Partnership Fair Housing Committee, and sorry, the John Cronin, which she just, that was what you said, John Cronin. So, if you wanna.
If we want to get active tonight or sit on this for the next meeting?
Well, I, I wanna make some suggestions here. So, Mr. Walsh is on the Age of the Elderly and I think that makes sense to have you stay there.
I'll stay there.
I'd like us to hold on the Islington Center Task Force for the time being. And I'd like to recommend that we adopt a new practice of having the chair of this board serve as chair of the Long Range Financial Planning Committee. I've been on it for 12 of the last 14 years and I think it would be beneficial to rotate this now going forward. My tenure has been quite long enough. And we do post it as public meetings and any of us are available to go or fill in. But that's my suggestion there and I would enjoy staying on the Royal London Humanitarian Committee. And then I think the last one, John, it's up to you if you wanna stay.
Yeah, I, I had very, very limited engagement with this group, so.
For what?
For WAC. Would, would you be interested, WAC, in exchange for Long Range Financial Planning?
Oh, sure.
Perfect. Okay. Does that work Christine? Do you need to vote on those?
I do need to vote on those because those are separate outside of.
Okay, so I move that the following assignments from the Board of Selectmen be made. Age of the Elderly and affirm Mr. Walsh, Long Range Financial Planning Committee, Mr. Hickey, Royal London Humanitarian Committee, Mrs. Hyde, and Westwood Environmental Action Committee. Thank you. Mrs. Hyde.
So, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Done.
And Christine, do you want us to do anything with page 33?
Yeah, she did. We skipped over.
The staff appointments.
She jumped.
So, with the.
I jumped around a lot.
Yeah, so I didn't.
It's all right, we'll get there.
You wanna roll, I didn't wanna interrupt you.
So, with, with the exception of the hold for the Islington Center Task Force, I move we approve all the staff appointments as noted in, on page 33 on our packets for this meeting on May 15th.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Done.
So, that.
Did that cover Christine?
That covers it.
Some of it going, right?
Clear it up, yeah.